Sarah Ellen, absent with notice. Here. Melissa Park here. Karen Wires here. Cecilia Luna here. Carolyn Fallon. Thanks. Dr. Awla. Candy here. Dr. Dave, absent with notice. Diane Salter.
Here.
Your representative, Jeff Harris. Brennan Baldwin. River Tanet. And Lexi Bierin.
Okay, stamp of pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the infinite. Okay, before we start, we are going to add an additional action item J, like Jacob. It's gonna be approval of the Brandon High School choir overnight trip to New York. So that'll be an action item J that we're gonna be adding when we go through our action items. Okay, first we have our student report.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Siewus from Brandon High School.
Wait a second. In a tur- what's your name?
Cecilia Siewus.
Okay. You can use-
If you want to use the mic, so you can hear you there. Sounder.
It's showing that error.
You really love the page.
Oh my gosh.
Good tone.
All right.
So on October 28th, the Student Council and me crew went together to host the Haunted Halls for the community. This event was highly attended by many people and commented on how the event exceeded their expectations. On November 4th, the Student Council event attended leadership in team building camp at Camp Hope Mahonic. This improved our communication and leadership and teamwork. In one of the pictures, where like, their activity was trying to get all, everyone over the wall, and everybody has to be on like the side before we could complete the activity, so that helped us like communicate better. So, our council's fall focus was the service to our community, and it was in November, we collect coats around the community for our community's clothing closet, and last Saturday, we had like, we knitted, we knitted 23 scarves to donate to the closet. These are some pictures of everybody and the like community members that came to our event. So, we have a charity week, and this year's charity, I mean year's charity is aligned for the Great Lakes. So our planned event is we start off like the week before, on Friday, December 6th, with the lock-in at Harvey Thompson. And then Monday, December 9th, is breakfast dinner at the high school, and we'll be throwing down a dollar each. And we have a bottle drive at BD's 47. Tuesday, December 10th, we have a dish of bread pajama day. Wednesday, December 11th, we have a fundraiser at Bullfrogs from 4 to 8, and 10% of all the proceeds go to our charity. Thursday, December 12th, we have a screw-out miracle minute at BHS during all lunches. And Friday, December 13th, we have a bagel day that will also be a dollar. And then at the home basketball game, there's gonna be a bake sale and a miracle minute. So, our high school sports is all sports, all sports has ended and tryouts for the winter season has started this week. Our coming event is the Student Council has been selected to host the MASC, MHS Regional Conference on January 15th at the Bavarian Inn, and this is a very big accomplishment for us. Stop-in at Hungry Howie's, oh, tomorrow we have this like Hungry Howie's fundraiser for the, for Student Council to raise money for states this year, so come support our activity. It's at the one in Oak Hill in the fifth seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is superintendent's report.
Hey, we have a series of visitors here, and I'm gonna begin by inviting Brittany Miller up to talk about Alice Wonderland Middle School Musical. Mr. Miller, can you make sure that my phone is on?
Sounds like it, Don, I just need to get closer to it. Good evening, I'm Brittany Miller, I'm the high school and middle school choir director, but I'm also in charge of the middle school musical. These are some of my students that are gonna give you a little sneak preview. We have Natalie, who is Alice. We have Kayla, who is the Caterpillar. We have Megan, who is the White Rabbit, and then we have Sophia, who is our Red Queen. They have been rehearsing for this musical since October. We have a total of, with crew kids, I believe we have 84 kids who are helping out or in part of the musical, so we have about 15 that are backstage kids who are gonna help us move set pieces around. The performances are December 6th and 7th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $5. We are doing a preview performance for both the middle school and the upper elementary this year, which is really fun during the school day on December 6th. It's a family-friendly show, it has singing and everything and all sorts of fun stuff. Let's give them a little see, yes?
Attention, attention! Inhabitants and subjects and all other direct or indirect objects of Wonderland, fall to your knees and tremble before her majestic majesty, her royal legality. Yes, folks, your favorite father, me and mine, the one, the only, Queen of Hearts. And just what do we have here?
I believe you mean, whom do we have here?
Silence, we speak the Queen's English here, you name this little wealth.
Yes, your loudness, I mean your meanness, I mean your highness. And my name is Alice.
Alice?
Yes, Alice, at least it was when I got here.
That's impossible, everyone knows Alice doesn't live here anymore.
Okay, well, that works too, because all I wanna do is get out of here and find my way back home.
Her way home? Your way home, you'll find my way home, or we'll cut off your head, to view why I say you are, no one else, do you understand?
No, nothing makes sense here.
Hey kiddo, I'll help you if so pleased as the Queen.
One question, that off of their head.
Remember, Alice, in our fabulosity, now answer this one simple question, and dig deep, who are you?
Our students are gonna pass you out a couple voucher tickets, they're good for either end of the performance, but, and please contact me if you need any more, but we would love to see you guys at the show if you're interested in coming.
And it's at the PAC, correct?
It's at the PAC, yeah.
Great, oh, this is exciting.
We start the walk over there in the cold next week.
Oh, it'll be 45 degrees.
I'm hoping that, yes. Thank you.
This is the third year, this is the third year of the middle school play, it's getting bigger each year, and just doing a great job. Everybody's doing wonderful jobs.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Very nice.
Yeah, we're really excited, they've run a really long way, it's really fun to see everything come together, we had our first run-through tonight. Very exciting. So the other thing is, I wanted to go over that last item that you guys just added, which is the choir dress, if possible. So, the community and Dr. Awla have been so incredibly supportive of the choir program the past couple of years, and we've grown so much, and I wanted kids to have another opportunity to experience the arts. So, I would like board approval for the choir to go to New York City in spring of 2021. We are traveling with World Stride, so Mr. Henderson has been using World Strides for-
10 years.
What?
25 years.
For 25 years, and I know that Mrs. Moreno is also using them for Puerto Rico for the summer trip with the Spanish group. So, we will be flying to New York City, the tickets were cheaper to fly than for busing. Students will be performing at the Heritage Festival Conference in New York City. We have the opportunity to go to Ellis Island, we're gonna see a Broadway show, there's a whole big itinerary of every minute planned for them. So, the trip is a three-day trip, cost for students is $1,000, give or take, I wanna say 200, so $1,200, I believe. With your approval, I'd love to start promoting this event, so kids have a really long time with families to get some money together, about, about a year plus, to get some money, if that's possible.
2021?
2021, yes. I wanted to make it so it's every other year with a band trip, because we have a lot of kids that are in both programs, and I'd love them to be able to go, not have to choose one.
Absolutely, sounds great, we're excited about this. Okay, anybody have any questions for her regarding the trip?
Can I chaperone?
We are definitely taking chaperones.
Great trip, thank you very much, thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Okay, next.
So, the next person, Dave Wyatt coming forward, just to talk a little bit about some of the special things that he and the group of students have been doing all around Brandon High School to bring school spirit and connect school with community, and take it away.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Awla, for having us today. So, just really quick to introduce some of the guests that we have here, we have Holly, okay, we also have Madison, and we have Jordan, so they're here, I'm gonna do very little talking, but we're gonna do more of the talking as we go throughout the slideshow, mostly the pictures to show you some of the awesome things that we're doing at Brandon High School to promote school spirit, but also to promote a positive culture for learning. So, one of the things that we strive for at Brandon High School several years ago, I was on a committee with Andy Phillips, and we had this whole character education program that we put into place, and so that was kind of like our tree trunk that helped to guide the high school when it came to creating what was called our PBIS matrix, and these are basically positive behaviors, interventions, and supports, that would then help kind of be a basis or the foundation for everything positive that we do in the high school. So it's be responsible, be respectful, and be involved, and this was done by a committee of students, as well as teachers and community members, who came up with these ideas of what would exemplify a great high school Black Hawk. And so, we wanna make sure that we're also a source of pride in all that we do, when people enter our buildings, we want them to leave and feel extremely welcome, but also leave feeling as if they were one of the best high schools in the state of Michigan, and we also wanna make sure that we always have student voice and involvement. You know, I'm there helping to kind of lead and guide the ship, but at the end of the day, it's their school, and so I want them to be excited to come to school every day. It's a work for me, it's a school for them, I want them to feel like it's an awesome place to be. So, some of this work we began several years ago with a small group of students, and I say a small group, it literally was myself and one other student, Karen Glad, she's graduated now, and we had kind of a mission, really sheeted, how to promote school spirit beyond just Brandon High School. And so, her objective was, how can we get Brandon's name out there when people drive in downtown Orville or downtown Arts and the M15 corridor? And so, we went to board meetings, both at the village level as well as township level, really trying to get them to buy in this idea of banners. And the village board felt took right off, it took a little bit more convincing with the township, long and short of it is, they're there, they're up every spring and summer, and Brandon, they're up all year long on different poles as you're driving through from Oak Hill Road all the way to Oakwood Road. And so, then we also put into place this Black Hawk Pride Board to where every month, we honor a student from the freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior class, as well as a staff member, who exemplify the great things going on at Brandon High School and creating a positive culture through responsibility, respect, and involvement. And once again, all done through student involvement in this process with myself and Mr. Stevens. So that's where I kinda end, and I'm gonna turn it over to these three ladies, and they're gonna kind of walk you through some of the things that have happened through the renovations at the high school, and the new signage that has gone up with their help as well as other students, so I don't know who's going first.
So, along with like after renovating our school, the walls were like kind of plain, just white, so we added some signs up around the school, just like positive inspirational quotes, and we also had pictures up too, and I think it just adds like a really positive and like much more enjoyable environment walking through schools and like reading them, and everyone I've talked to, they like them, and they think that it's pretty nice to like just go around like reading them. We also have them in the bathrooms too, and then also, there are some pictures up as well of just like anyone in our community or our faculty, and it's kind of nice walking around and like looking at those, along with the art that some of the students have done.
Okay, so along with like our renovations to the school, like physically, one of the biggest goals this year was to change like the atmosphere in general and make it like, like much more of a positive place to come every day. So, student leaders on committees helped to pick topics, activities impacting and informing peers, positive mentors, sounder classmates, challenge A and B to change, and two of the biggest like changes this year were we have, we have seminar and the freshman launch class. The freshman launch class is kind of a class for all the freshmen that need more like one-on-one time, and this is really like beneficial for them, because women felt that they didn't really have like a place, they didn't really like belong. Now, like along with like Ms. Chan and Mr. Ralkey, they like make it like a big project of theirs to like help them, engage with them, with all the help that they need. With seminar, this has been really beneficial for everybody. It's kind of like, we consider them like families, like a couple, a couple people from each grade are like grouped with a teacher, and then like twice a week, Tuesday and Thursday, you kind of do like activities, bonding and all that with your class.
This year, Lee Crew and Stu Co came together and created another year of our Haunted Halls. Every year, the group of kids just gets bigger with all our activities that we have, it's a really great turnout, and this year it was, turned out really good. Yeah, there's the pictures, there's coloring, everyone tells me costumes, and we have like costumes and stuff.
So kind of I'll leave you with the last slide, and it talks about the impact of student involvement. So, I know from some of my peers and even students in the past have always heard, well, why do you want students involved? You know, you're the administrator, or we're the teachers. Well, it's not just about necessarily the students being involved to help build impact, it's about helping them gain skills so that way that they're better productive citizens once they leave Brandon High School. That's my goal. And so this chart here just kind of shows, this pie graph shows, by getting students involved, the overall atmosphere that you've created, by setting them up for success beyond those four years at Brandon High School, we're helping them learn how to goal set, we're helping them learn how to problem solve, be analytical thinkers, all of those things. So, although this is awesome, we're doing all these great things to make Brandon High School truly one of the best high schools in the state of Michigan, the bottom line is that these young ladies, as well as the other students that Mr. Stevens and I meet with, truly almost a daily basis, we're setting them up for life skills that they need when they move on to whatever type of degrees or opportunities wait for them beyond Brandon High.
Very impressive, when did those banners, I just noticed them, I felt like, have they been up for a long time, or did they just go up?
So, as far as some of the signage that you saw-
Yeah, I saw that on the 15.
Oh yeah, so those banners went up two years ago. Yep.
I'm like, I thought you were on the road.
I know, I was, I was focusing, but I'm sitting there at that stop that the light went, oh my god, look at them, I'm calling them, I thought those were me.
Now Diane, something that's really funny about those is that over the summer, we had a pretty big storm that came through, and one of the banners had popped loose, it was right near kind of Bullfrogs, and there's a house that sits in front of, and there was a gentleman, the day, the next day I was dragging in, and this was like in August, and we, the administration came back, said, what is that guy doing on the ladder? At first I was taking it down, I said, no. And so I was watching, he was out there literally reattaching, and so it's really cool, there are community members that answer coming loose, you know, the commitment was, it's at the district, literally Dave Wyatt was gonna go out the ladder and ask him to do something. People are doing it on their own, and there's multiple people that have sent in to, even Brian Morikamp oversees the website, he has comments, people have asked, how can I get one on in front of my property, how can I get this? We would love to expand it, it just would take some more convincing of MDOT, with that being a state road, there was limited space that we were allowed to use because of clearance and all that, but we actually had multiple people that didn't say, can we get a banner in front of our light bulbs? It'd be really cool.
It's so good to hear all this good news, I mean, we do hear things now and then, and to see all that's been going on so far even this year has been really tremendous, and seeing that Black Hawk Pride, thank you very much, anybody? Thank you.
And I will just, as a follower, Mr. Wyatt has been driving the horse in this for several years, but he was on the ladder with, I believe, Detective Hubble, to add to those signs on M15, Village, he's got a big spearhead with a lot of things, school spirit, bringing students, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Okay, next up, Mr. Henderson has video, the students doing the lay of the reef at Washington DC, followed up from last night.
You got your shirt on, huh? 40 degrees. I actually have two of the students who presented the reef at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier with us tonight. I also gave Dr. Awla copies of letters the students wrote, so that you can see what they wrote and why they were chosen, if you have any questions. This year, you know, this is the first time I've ever brought a reef layers to the school board, because four kids that were chosen were just so outstanding, and I'm so proud of them for what they wrote, and, and for their presentation at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and you guys have been so supportive of the DC trip, I wanted to share that with you. Yep.
May I have your attention, please? The ceremony that you are about to witness is an army reef laid ceremony conducted by Brandon Middle School. It is requested that everyone remain silent and standing during this ceremony. All military personnel in uniform will render their hands loop, and it is appropriate for all of us to place the right hand, open your heart, a public banner present on. Thank you.
That was a soldier with his heels clicking, not the girls. To me, as many trips as I've made to Washington DC, the, the honor to lay a reef to the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier on behalf of Brandon Schools is something that, I don't know why, has become very emotional, and, and this year with Kayla and Wyatt and Abby and Reese, they just did an awesome job, the letters they wrote that you have were phenomenal, and I'm extremely proud of these kids and our school, we received so many compliments on our trip this year of our kids, I just wanted you guys to know that.
I gotta tell you, it's almost like, just even watching it on the video, it's just, you're just solemn, I mean, and how respectful the whole ceremony is, and our kids were, yeah, sort of moving, even watching it here, I've seen it in person, but still, it brings, it brings-
It is, I've seen it over 30 times, and you know, even looking at it on the video, to me, it's still powerful.
So a fun, so a fun little story, my husband was on that trip in the chaperone-
Really?
He was, really, right?
Missed it.
And you, your trip, your students, your chaperones, there was a trip of about five soldiers that were there watching in the back, and they said that you guys were the absolute best group they have ever seen, and they were so proud, you know, that they got to witness that, so I wanted you guys to know that you had, you know, active military soldiers watching you, and they were extremely proud of what you guys did, so.
Well, not only in this ceremony where they're active soldiers, but there were two honor flags there from Korea and World War II that you didn't see in the background, and our students were able to thank them afterwards, after the ceremony, for their service, that is a lasting memory for them as well. That's something that's been happening more and more recently as our nation has begun to honor and bring back our veterans to Arlington. With, you know, the past five years, we've experienced a number of honor flags, which could- With, you know, the past five years, we've experienced a number of honor flags, which is a great experience for our nation.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I do, what did you think going up there and doing that? How was that experience for you?
Oh, I was kind of nervous. I was a little messed up, but once I was there, I knew I couldn't turn around.
You did very well.
I remember being really kind of scared, like, I could be so tall, and I...
He was, he was one of the biggest desk sergeants I've seen.
And I have a real issue with smiling, so I was trying really hard not to smile.
Did he say anything to you at the very end, or just good?
Uh, he just shook our hand. He said, "Thank you."
Okay.
Oh, you guys did a great job.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, and then, last thing I have on here is, we started this last year. We're going to continue doing this at the end of each season. We do a quick update on fall season, and then Mr. Dyson will give us a preview of the upcoming season. It'll be back in March, and then it'll be back in June, so.
That's a powerful act to follow after Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Yeah, thank you. C.C. stole my thunder with her presentation, saying fall sports have wrapped up and winter has begun, but I'll elaborate a little more on that. All of our fall teams saw tremendous, tremendous growth and improvement this season. We had a first-year program, a cooperative program with our girls swim program. Goodrich joined us this year. We had many individuals with personal records. We had a freshman diver, Macy Polasek, qualified for the MHSA regional dive competition and just barely missed the cut one state competition. Our swim coach, Ryan Droghmiller, he was voted Flint Metro League Coach of the Year by his peers for his continued improvement and competitiveness within our swim program. So, that was a good accolade to see for our coach. Our boys tennis program made strides. They finished right in the middle of the Flint Metro League standings this year, and we had three individuals who earned All-League awards. Volleyball, also under first-year head coach Taylor Lepick, they finished third in the Stars Division. And they also had three individuals who were recognized on All-League teams. Our girls golf team was small, but we had quite a few individual accolades. Sophomore, Gail LaFleur, finished third place at an early-season tournament up in Frankenmuth, and then went on to be first-team All-League for our team. Senior Zoe Cooney earned second-team All-League and was also All-State Academic in Division III. And then senior Hammy McCormick also was honorable mention Academic All-States in Division III. For cross-country, senior River Jeanette, and sophomore Valerie Moore, and freshman Bella Hearns, all qualified to compete in the state finals down at MIS. Valerie also set a school record for us earlier this year when she competed at the Genesee County Meet. She had a personal best time of nineteen forty-six, which happens to be the tenth fastest time in Brandon history, so she would vote on the record board. Our varsity boys soccer team finished fourth in the Flint Metro League. They won the Ascot, Ascoda Tournament earlier in the year, and we had six players who earned All-League honors. And right now, one of our players is up for All-State recognition as well. That is supposed to be released sometime this week, so we're crossing our fingers for a hunch of marketing. Varsity football had a great year again. Finished eight and three overall. They were four and one in the Stars Division. And again, qualified for the state playoffs, which is the fifth year in a row that they have done that. We had fifteen players receive All-League honors off the football team. And again, we have three or four players that are up for All-State recognition, but that won't come out until the state titles are all done. Our fall participation numbers are steady and same as they've been in previous years. We had forty-five scholar athletes this fall. Of those forty-five scholar athletes, fifteen of them made All-League teams. So, not only are they smart, but they're also very good at the sport that they play. Roughly, our participation numbers are about thirty percent of our student population, so. Winter sports kicked off last week. Girls' basketball and cheerleading started last week. Those teams are set. Boys' basketball, boys' and girls' bowling, wrestling, they've all started this week. Tonight's sort of the first day of trials for them. And then boys' swimming starts next Monday. Meet the Blackhawks. Winter Meet the Team night will be Wednesday, December fourth, so it's the Wednesday after Thanksgiving. Seven o'clock in the main gym. It's a free event. We introduce all of our teams and coaches. Actually, I introduce the coach, and the coach introduces the team. And then they have their breakout team meetings if they want that night, if they haven't done it prior to that. Winter games start the week we come back from Thanksgiving, so the week of December second, we start winter contests. We're hosting some big tournaments this winter. We have a wrestling tournament on January eighteenth, which is a Saturday. We're also hosting MHSA District Wrestling this year. We have our Competitive Cheer Invitational on February fifteenth. And we were selected this year to host an MHSA Girls' Basketball Quarterfinal game, which will be in March. And then, just to kind of toot my own professional horn, last week at our Regional Athletic Directors Meeting, I was nominated and voted as the Region Nine Rep for the Greater Flint and Thelma Athletic Directors. So, basically, that means I will be a regional rep that will communicate from our athletic directors here to the state level. I'll be on different subcommittees with that year, so. That is a wrap, so any questions?
Great job, yeah. Plenty of achievements. Excellent. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay, wow. Okay, does anybody have any public comments and questions on agenda business? None? Okay. Next, we're going to get into approval of our consent agenda.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All those with favors say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Okay, we're going to information and discussion items. Board of Education Committee reports, Melissa?
Yes, we did our expert evaluation, and Dr. Outlaw came highly effective, so I thank him for all his dedication and commitment toward the district.
Anyone else have a committee report to follow up? Okay. Finance report, Jan.
Yeah, I have two items on the operational side of things tonight. The first action item is to, for the board to approve a contingency for, to finish our LED lighting conversion. We had some things come up, and John can talk about the technical details, but we're asking for an additional, uh, sixty thousand dollars. And then, that should be it. We should finish up that project. We're trying to get all the projects done that we started. The second is, has to do with our custodial supply. John has been telling me for a while that the, we were trying to use enough cash supplies, but they were really ineffective for a lot of reasons, so we went up to bid. We had three companies bid, and we would like to ask the board to approve that Dr. Outlaw enters the contract with Arnold Supply. We've been testing these products at various schools and had Heidi, our custodian supervisor, involved in the meetings, John and Heidi, Deb. And we all agreed that Arnold Supply's had been tested really well. There will be an increase in costs. They're really hard to gauge, but I'm guessing seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is not insignificant. But we believe that, especially at Oakwood, boys have been complaining of bathrooms just don't smell clean, frankly. And this product has made a big difference, so John and all of his experience over the years doing this, he has convinced me that this would be a good move for us, and our buildings will be cleaner. So, that is our second item that we're asking you to approve tonight.
And greener. The products we chose are all GS thirty-seven certified, which is green seal certified to protect the environment. So, where we can use those green seal products, we will. And, for instance, on floor finishes, they'll be better green for the environment. The cleaning chemicals themselves, where we can, there are times when you have to use products that are not green seal certified, such as germsidals, because it's the very nature of a germsidal, to clean the toilet, that that kills germs, and because of that, it's not green seal certified. But where we can, we will, and that's our goal.
So, given the nature of the substance that's being used, can the, or maybe we already do this, can the containers that they come in be recycled?
They are.
They are?
They can be, yes. As a matter of fact, the floor, one of the big things about the floor finish is it comes in a very light plastic ladder inside a cardboard box, so that instead of coming in this huge plastic container with harsher chemicals, this product is less abusive.
I'd like to add too, I forgot to mention that this particular company will be doing trainings throughout the year. I asked John to schedule with them if you approved right at the beginning. So, it might seem like all of our custodians should automatically know how to use chemicals and how to clean, but they don't necessarily do that. So, it's an added bonus. We'll have some support.
Quarterly training, and the man who does the training teaches also a community college. So, in this, this was subject matter, so he's well-trained in that. Online ordering, just-in-time delivery, so we won't be holding lots of supplies on-site anymore. They'll order once a month, be delivered once a month. Two, direct to the site, so it frees up our staff not to have to take things over around the district. It's a net positive for the district in all those areas.
Just out of curiosity, do you have any favorite place to train new employees when they come in and pull some?
Yeah, that's, that's this whole process. The Arnold Supply will come in anytime we want them to, but at a minimum quarterly, to train in bathroom cleaning, general cleaning, floor maintenance, all those areas. And, of course, that's an area I'm familiar with as well, so maybe I can step in and do some training on that side.
I think the biggest part is how to use their products, because currently, you order products and maybe use too much or too little, whatever. So, just knowing the most efficient way to use their products is best results would be an inclusion.
Is this a purchase order-based monthly, or is there a term to a contract, or, I mean, it sounds lovely, I don't think it's the Black Hawk.
It's really, really, it's just P.O.-based. There's no specific dollar amount. As a matter of fact, our goal is to, is to keep the perp down in not ordering any more supplies than we need. That's what we're going to, just-in-time delivery, and not having a large supply. What tends to happen when that happens is that you end up with a lot of stuff that you never use, that gets old, and this way, that won't ever happen anymore. So, you don't, then you have to pay to give it a supply.
We are going to use our current supply, though.
Yeah.
John, not throwing anything away.
The goal with that is that at the high school, we'll take everything to the high school and start with the elementary schools and the middle school, start using the new products, so we have an avenue to use the older products. And as they become, as that, as that supply moves down, we'll start injecting that into the high school as well.
What happened with the lighting?
The lighting? Well, several things happened with the lighting. Well, they were doing some of the work. They found electrical that was improper. And wires that had rotted out or not looked well, that worked well, that you wouldn't know until you started opening things up. Along with that, there were some items that the state inspector wanted brought up to the current code, where, in many cases at Harvey Swanson, there were two wire systems instead of grounded three-wire systems. We put in the two-wire system, hoping that it would be okay. It was fine, but the state inspector said, "No, you're going to have to run a third line." So, those were adding costs. There were some areas where we needed two-seventy-seven electrical, and it was four-eighty. And so, they had to, they had to reduce it. And some of these things, I had okay on the fly, because we didn't want the electrical being off in the buildings and the kids not being able to come to school because the electrical is off. So, some of the things I approved on the fly to keep them going. Some of the things we, we did were designed to give us the best outcome.
And was mostly at Harvey at the high school, the other two schools were not as affected, or was it all four?
Harvey Swanson was one of the big ones, but out at the new Oakwood, the electrical out there to the parking lot was wired at four-eighty, and the system going in was two-seventy-seven. It's all designed around reducing the cost of energy.
Just out of curiosity, how's that generally doing over there?
It's going to be worked on this week. There were some problems with it, but it's being repaired and should be taken care of and back online by the end of the week.
So, where does this leave us? Is the project finished or near finished?
No, the high, all the elementaries. All the elementaries, except for the awning at Swanson, which you'll be approving if you approve this, the repair there. But all the other buildings are state-approved and legal. Harvey Swanson is all state-approved on the outside where the students are, but the canopy has to be brought up to the three-wire system for that. But the, none of it precluded occupancy. The electrical inspector said there is no issues with the students being in the building. They gave a full approval in that regard. As far as the high school is concerned, we're about a little over, between half and three-quarters done. If you happen to go into the gymnasium now, all the new lighting is in there. There are no dark spots. The cafeteria is changed out. All the hallways have been done. They're working on classrooms, restrooms now, and some acolyte rooms. So, again, when we get into that, we, we start, parking lot lights there, they actually pulled some parking lot lights off the driveway and, or the parking area where the students are, and the wires were actually disintegrating, so they had to run a new wire for it. Again, those are things I approved on the fly, so that we didn't have electrical turned off in the buildings.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, John. Next, we have Jan. Anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, thanks, Jan. Thank you. Education report.
Just a very quickly, in the next month, you're going to have a few new classes that we'd like to present to you as new classes for the school district. As you know, we received a Marshall grant this summer for us to launch a welding machine program at Brandon High School, starting in the fall of two thousand twenty. We're going to come forward with the course descriptions that will accompany those two next month. So, that'll be Machine Welding A and Machine Welding B. And then, one of the courses will come to you. We're looking at adding an AP Computer Science class. And Carrie Leslie, the teacher, has kind of organized that, and that's another class that will be coming next month. Just a preview. In December, we'll have details and all the paperwork on that book company. Any questions?
No? Great. Thank you. Okay, next we have action items. Approval of Dr. Outlaw's evaluation.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve to accept Dr. Outlaw's evaluation as presented.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you. Great job. All those with favors say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Approval of resolution to call for an election.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the resolution to call for an election as presented.
Support. Okay, discussion.
We've been talking about this for a long time, and we're going step-by-step. The board approved the preliminary bond application last month. And this will be officially calling for election on March tenth for projects that we've been discussing.
Okay, and that's March tenth, two thousand twenty. Any discussion? Okay, because this is a resolution, could I have a roll call vote, please?
John Schardt here?
Yes.
Russell Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer, yes. Ms. Cabaluna?
Yes.
I'm a phone?
Yes.
Diane Sova?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. All six voting yes. Okay, approval of bond-related expenses.
Move the Brandon Board of Education allow the superintendent to approve up to twenty thousand dollars for bond-related expenditures related to the March two thousand twenty twenty election as presented.
Support. Okay, any discussion?
This would accompany, there is an information campaign that needs to take place. We need to be able to have signs, and things, and people in the community know what's being asked for. And there are expenditures related to that, so this allows us to, you know, expend those dollars to educate the public on what it is that's being presented.
And it's not a yes-no, it's just a, this is the data, this is the info.
Correct. And anything from the district, anything from the district is factual and needs your own ears.
Any other question? Okay, all those with favors say yes.
Yes.
Any F.O.s say no? Any FOs say no. Motion passes. Approval of contingency funds request.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the request for contingency funds in the amount of $46,134.01 as presented. Additionally, move the Brandon Board of Education approve an additional $13,865.99 of contingency fund for project completion.
Support. Okay, you had to put the one cent right there.
And I...
No, I'm just kidding. Any other discussion that's already been, okay. All those in favor say yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, approval of custodial supply vendor.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education authorize Dr. Outlaw to enter into a contract with Arnold Sales for all custodial supplies based on competitive prices. It is a great investment.
Support. Okay, any discussion that we just already made?
I just have to ask one time. The contract is, doesn't have a term or it's terminable?
It is terminable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I'm good.
All those in favor say yes. Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes. Approval of the Brandon Administrator Association contract.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the BAA contract as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Two percent paid.
Okay. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Approval of Maintenance and Operations Association contract.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the Maintenance and Operations Association contract as presented.
Okay.
This is two percent and fixing some language around some of the uniforms and things like that that we are making.
All those in favor say yes. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Approval of the Brandon Education Support Personnel Association contract.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the VESP A contract as presented. Support.
Okay, discussion.
Jan's lead negotiator in this one.
This is our secretarial, the secretary unit, that steps in two percent. I'm sorry, one percent, we switched it yesterday.
Yeah, the steps is part of it.
It's part of the...
Yeah, the steps is a division of ours.
Those at the top, that stuff in the U2.
Okay.
That's right.
Right. Okay. Okay, all those in favor say yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Approval of salary adjustments for edgy staff and other non-union Brandon employees.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve salary adjustments for edgy staff and other non-union Brandon employees as presented. Support.
Any discussion?
The presentation is right there. We'll share an edgy staff, we have some employees that are employed through edgy staff, some that are rarely approved, but this is classroom assistants, interventionists, it is preschool associate teachers, all of those type of people, the central office support staff, all of those folks, all the people that are not in units that have former Harvard University students. It's a two percent increase.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Could I get a approval for the Brandon High School choir overnight trip to New York?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the VHS choir overnight trip to New York, March 27th through March 30th of 2021 as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes, but they're going to New York. Okay, citizens input. That's it. Thank you.